Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 16th Warren Zoning Board of Review. My name is Jason Raynon. I am the acting chair for this evening. In that respect, I would like to start this evening's meeting by recognizing that our chairman of this board, Andrew Ellis, has had to resign his position. Unfortunately, if he finds himself in a position where he needs to move out of town to tend to the health needs of a family member. So I would like to get it on the record that this board does thank him for, I believe it's either 14 or 15 years of service to both this board and to the community of Warren. So we thank him very much for his service and we do wish him well on both his move and with his family's health. Again, my name is Jason Raynon. I am the acting chair. To my right is Michael Alves. Continuing down the row is David Francis. And at the end of the row is Chuck Thibodeau. We are on a skeleton crew this evening. The minimum number of board members we need in order to be able to hear an application is four. We will get back to the fact that if one member has to recuse, that can, that particular application will need to be continued. Unfortunately, that will happen this evening, but we will get there. From an administrative standpoint, two sets of minutes were circulated via email prior to this meeting. They are for the May 21st site visit and the May 21st regular meeting. Is there any discussion of those minutes as circulated?
Nope, I'll make a motion to approve. There's a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as circulated. We have no old business for this meeting. First order of business from a new business standpoint is application ZB 25-16. Paula Andrade Hamilton, owner and James and Sherry Thacker, applicant. Zero Overhill Road, Platte Map 13E Lot 317. Request for a dimensional variance to construct a single-family home with less than the required lot width in the R10 zoning district. It is my understanding that one board member does need to recuse themselves from this application.
I will have to recuse myself.
Thank you, Michael. Is that application here this evening? Could you please come to the podium, give your name and current address?
Sherry Thacker, excuse me.
Jim Thacker saying.
Unfortunately, we do not have four people to be able to hear this application this evening. What we did want to discuss, I believe we've been in contact with two of the members that are not available this evening. And they do have availability next week if we were to call a special meeting to be able to discuss this. Particulars of it next week.
I'm not available. I don't know if I'm available.
So we might be right back in the same situation.
I do believe.
Chuck, what's your schedule look like next week?
What day are you thinking?
I know that I can make Wednesday work.
Looks like I could do Wednesday. Can we do it at six instead of seven or is that going to screw everybody up? Because we're only doing one item, right? We're not going to add anything else to this.
Correct. It would just be the one item. Maya, is there a reason we could not do 6pm? Is there any? Sure. I mean, I'm sure we could probably manage a venue change if we needed to meet in a different bit, a different room in the building. Oh, is this right? This is, yeah. Okay. Gotcha.
You'll do one item.
Why don't you guys take it off and discuss it? We need offline and discuss.
Because it's a public hearing. Notice purposes, we need a definite date, definite time, a definite location, but a public in order to continue notification that is required by law.
We don't know if everybody else can make it.
The only concern with 6pm is I'm not sure if Jason Nice can get back.
I mean, I can go later. Whatever works for him. Everybody's in town at six. It'd be easy just to do it, knock it out.
Yeah, I have a feeling since people are normally here for a seven o'clock meeting, I know that people can at least make accommodations.
But you won't be here. I won't be here. So if you guys, you have to confirm tonight that you have a quorum by Ben's.
It's going to be us two, Jason Nice and Bert. And he'll be, he can come next Wednesday. Okay.
Yeah, so I think that would probably be the best way to do it would be to schedule a special zoning board meeting 7pm next Wednesday, which would be the 23rd. At 7pm. Specifically for this application. And we'll just hear it right off the bat and we'll keep it as short as we possibly can. So for anyone who is here for the Zero Overhill Road application, that particular application will be heard next Wednesday, 7pm in this room, hopefully. Yes, this room definitely. Excellent. All right. Thank you. So thank you very much. We'll see you next week. Oh, is there a motion to schedule that? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So 7pm next Wednesday, we'll see you both then. Thank you. Moving on to the second order of business for the evening. Application ZB 25-17. Michael and Marcella Larabee, owner and applicant, 16 Satcham Street, Platte Map 13C Lot 9. Request for a dimensional variance to construct an addition to a single-family home with less than the required side yard setback in an R10 zoning district. I'm going to mark this. Yes, we'll mark that as exhibit A. Please state your name and current address.
Michael Pete Larabee, 16 Satcham Street, Warren.
Marcella Larabee, 16 Satcham Street, Warren.
Excellent. And the document that you've just given to the board is different from the plan that was submitted?
You know, it's just a layout of the proposed piece of property was one.
Excellent. Very good. Please tell us what you'd like to do.
We have the plan that we have is an in-law apartment, one floor. Trying to get a 24 feet. I have from my foundation to the borderline, it says it's 33 and a half. Oh, 33 plus or minus. There's existing fence from the neighbor put up at 34 feet. But not might, that might not come into play, I heard. So I'm trying to get obviously at 15 feet. Now I cannot build a property. I need a 10-foot variance. Absolutely. The front and back are fine. To be attached to the house, current house.
That makes sense. Can you tell us a little bit about the intent for the new space? Do you have relatives that are coming? Are you planning on?
She's, she's living in the main house with us. She's got, she's going to sell her house in Secock. Bring her other boy there and we're going to move into the, we're snowbirds. So it's a happy year, you know? So we're here for the summertime.
Gotcha. In reading through the application, the only variance that we are looking for in this instance is the one side yard setback, correct?
Correct.
36, 24. Gotcha. So what I'm looking at here that we've marked as exhibit A, this is the rough floor plan for what would go in the 36 by 24 foot.
Right. Well, obviously we're trying to get 24 feet, but you know, that's right out of the borderline.
Sure. Understood. Can you make sure that's back to mine? All right. Are there any questions from the board?
No, it seems like you're requesting relief from what was 15 foot yard setback. The side yard and you need a 10.
Correct. Get it down to 23 to 24 feet.
Seems pretty close.
Anything less than that, down to 20 is too narrow.
Are there any other questions from the board at this time? Great. If you two wouldn't mind having a quick seat. We will open this up to the public. If there is anyone else in attendance who would like to speak on this matter in any way, please come forward. Seeing none, if you would. It's just a formality. You can come on back up to the podium.
You can come back up.
Go ahead.
You can come back up.
None of your neighbors complains.
Okay, that's usually a good sign. When you sit down and half the room stands up, you know you're in trouble. Is there anything else you would like the board to know about the project prior to us having a quick discussion?
That's all I did.
Compared to make motion, it's we don't have any more questions.
I have no other questions. There's no information from the building official, correct? Nothing special we need to consider?
Nothing at this time.
Very good.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application ZB 2517. Michael and Marcella Larabee, owner and applicant, 16 Satcham Street, Platte Map 13C Lot 9. Request for dimensional variance to construct an additional, in addition to a single-family home with less than the required side yard setback in the R10 zoning district. This is the hardship is due to unique characteristics subject to the land structure. Yes, I guess they're trying to put an in-law apartment in a, trying to move an additional family members into a home that can't supply adequate room for the other family.
Basically.
Seeking relief of the 15-foot side yard setback with 10-foot side back setback. Setback and they are looking, the room itself, if it went shorter than the 20 wouldn't provide for their needs. So that's why the setback is required in this instance and it would be hardship if this did not go through. This is not a result of any action done on part of the applicant and doesn't result from any sort of financial gain. I know that some of these variables that are on our sheet has, have moved. So you guys just tell me what a hidden one that doesn't apply anymore. Granted, the variance will not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area. And the request forms with the purpose and intent of Warren zoning and comprehensive plan. Because of the short supply of houses and apartments in the area, this definitely meets with what the town needs relative to the residential living as well, comporting with the competent, the comprehensive plan. The relief request is the least relief necessary. That's not that's no longer. I had a good one for that one. Additional standards for use of variance does not, the evidence show evidence that the subject of the structure cannot give any beneficial use in this regard to perform to the zoning. In addition, I'm going to just state again, the fact that the way that the home is constructed on the land, even though there is a lot of land on the other side, this side where you're building this particular addition does not offer that much room. And so the board wants, I'm sorry, the relief is necessary. As he stated, less than 20 feet would not meet the needs of moving this family into the space. So it is for that, those reasons that I made my motion.
So motion made and seconded. I will note that we condition this approval that obviously all of the construction must meet applicable construction codes and any necessary fire or egress codes that may be conveyed by the building official. Are there any other conditions on the approval? We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Enjoy. Good luck.
Moving on to our third application, application ZB 25-18. State Properties LLC owner and John Pettenelli applicant, 317 Market Street, Platte Map 21 Lot 3. Request for a special use permit to allow commercial recreation in the rural business zoning district. Gentlemen, if you could state your name and current address for the record.
John Pettenelli, 12 Woodland Terrace, Providence, Rhode Island.
Michael Hofstadter, 22 Spencer Ave, East Greenwich, Rhode Island.
Great. Tell us what you want to do.
We want to open up a pickleball court, sir.
All right then. So tell us about the project. Are you staying within the confines of the existing building? How many courts are we talking about? What are the parking requirements? Flesh it out for us.
Yes, sir. There's nine courts that we're putting into the space. We're taking over 25,000 square feet of the existing space. There's a boat repair mechanic builder that's, has rented out the other side of that building. We're expecting between at the most 50 and 60 people at any given time inside of the pickleball courts. And there's more than adequate parking in the front. And if we need an overflow, there's plenty of room in the back.
I can ask the building official, would this qualify as a place of public assembly?
Yes, I mean, this, this falls under the zoning table. As for its commercial recreation, so that, that the property and that building does qualify for what they are requesting. Unfortunately, as we're all aware, the rural business zoning district has no by right, everything is under special use. And this is one of the items that falls on that special use.
Makes sense. So then this would qualify as a commercial use. So we're five spaces plus one for every 250 square feet?
Yes, and there's, there's ample parking on the, on that property.
250, so we are talking about 105 parking spots required. And the testimony is there is ample parking on that site?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is it, do you go with your question? Do you guys question that? I don't know.
No, I don't know.
So they have the parking because there is that large area of gravel that they can park on.
That makes sense.
Do they have to swipe it or anything? Not you guys with the building loan at some point or?
There's future plans for that, so.
Let's see. What else do we need to discuss? You guys are tenants, correct? So there is a landlord?
Correct, sir.
Is trash removal taken care of by the building? Will you guys have trash of any kind that needs to be dealt with?
It will be dealt with by the building and the landlord.
So there are dumpsters available with?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will there be any sort of food preparation, snack bar, anything along those lines, anything beyond say vending machines? Okay, so it really is just the, the courts themselves and whatever structure is necessary to support them.
That's correct. We're not even, we're not even moving any walls. There's no structural construction going on. I'm also a general contractor. I'll be doing the project myself. I'll pull in the building permit myself.
Makes sense.
You have to put a floor in or?
Yes, sir. It's a padded cushioned floor. So it's painting the walls, putting the floor in and popping some nets up.
Great. What are your anticipated hours of operation? Let me ask this a different way. What is the outside bounds of what you would expect your anticipated hours of operation are?
7am to 10pm.
7am to 10pm and that would include staff and cleanup?
Correct.
And is that seven days a week?
That's what we're, yes.
Okay.
It's all doors, so.
Correct, sir. There's no outdoor courts.
The outside plane.
Are you planning on putting up signage?
Yes, sir, on the outside.
Is that something they have to?
So yeah, it's going to, that would become a question of whether or not it is reskinning any existing signage that's on the building, which if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe there is. So at some point, either you or the landlord or both would need to come before us if it's going to exceed the amount of square footage that's allowed within the zoning, the signage ordinance and the zoning code.
So can I ask a question? It's on the building. It says East Bay Blaberd.
Correct.
Are you on the other side behind, where are you?
The left, the left-hand side of the building and then the four garage doors that are off to the right as you're looking at the building. That's where the like boat, like
So you're taking up that whole
left-hand side.
So it's just going to be a nose pad.
Correct, sir. No, they're not.
You have like a carport, whatever they put over there. It happens that part of the same side.
That, that's decided it's on. We're not going to be using the carport. Yeah, but that's it. Yeah. So my, dealing with the landlord, so all of the exterior modifications to the current existing structure will be done by him. So lighting, signage in conjunction with us.
So your lease and your responsibility stops at the interior?
Yes, sir.
Very good. So when he gets ready to do signage or you're ready to put signage, you guys are going to have to leave back because we have signage.
Signage and lighting. And lighting as well.
Understood.
All right. What are we forgetting to ask about?
Well, it's not in charge of lighting, so that's out.
He doesn't have a cap application for signage, so.
That's it.
All right.
All indoors, it's not going to affect any of them.
Well, from the looks of it, I don't think you guys even have to sit down, but for the sake of argument, we will open the public portion. If there's anyone to speak on this matter. Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, before you move forward, after reviewing the application and I misunderstood what you were requesting. This is not a public place of assembly. This is considered a business.
Okay.
So the, the large amount of parking that you had stated earlier isn't in fact what they need. There is ample parking on the property. But just for the record, they would, they would only need five spaces plus one space for each 250 square feet of floor space.
Gotcha. And if I'm correct, they are 25,000 square feet. So did I do my math wrong?
I'm sure you did it correctly. I'm not going to question you back. It's been a long day.
Yes.
And there are twelve in the whole building between this and the boat. So it's not like we're going to have to worry about parking issue with a third.
Correct. In theory, it doesn't seem like there's another tenant space that's going to come in to deal with this. So it seems like once the parking is settled, it's settled. All right, very good. Is there anything else that you guys think we need to know?
Just thank, thank the town of Warren for the opportunity to come bring a business here.
Very good. Are there any other questions or emotion on the matter?
Yeah, I'll make it. I got it. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Let's see. I think it really says anything. It doesn't really say pickleball, does it?
Yes.
It's actually, it's commercial recreation. If you're
I'm going to change it for the, right?
The term.
So we're going to change it to commercial recreation. Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve application ZB 2518. State Properties LLC owners and John Pentenelli applicant, 317 Market Street, Platte 21 Lot 3. Requesting for a special use permit to allow commercial recreation in the rural business district. In approving this, I feel that with the testimony that was given by the, by the tenant, that the special use will be compatible with the neighborhood land use. Looks like they're going to have plenty of parking. They're going to have parking for over 100 with the front parking lot and the rear overflow. That the, obviously we're bringing in a good business into the, into the town. And the special use will not create a hazard, which it will be actually a betterment that will have a physical, a physical entertainment type business coming in that would be, that would increase the the options in the town to do some sports. And the special use permit will be compatible with the community comprehensive plan. We're always bringing new businesses in. We always encourage new businesses to come into the town and pickleball seems to be like one of those businesses, you know, one of those businesses that's really starting to really capture, capture the audience, right? So that's, that's great that we're going to be, have that come in. The, the public convenience and welfare will be served. Again, with, with another business in town and something else to do in the small town that we have. And the public convenience and the and basically the only things that we, we require is that when the construction does, does get done, that it's all, the interior is all done through the building official and through all the, the proper, the proper codes and regulations in fire coding. Also that when the, the owner starts doing the exterior of this, he needs to be informed that if signage is going to go past what the, what we permit, he may have to come in and lighting would probably have to be, come in front of it as it all, because we have restrictions in certain type of lighting that we have, that we, we make restrictions on. Anything else?
No, I think that covers it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, come aboard.
Motion carries.
Good luck. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Let's see, from an administrative standpoint, I would like to start by saying, Maya, we will miss you. As it is officially Maya's last meeting with us.
I mean, you guys could try to keep her.
I've already promised I will only curse a little bit when the tax bill shows up. Do we know who is picking up the? Okay. Great. So we will plan on seeing her.
Those planning are ready.
Oh, great. Perfect. Will we see you next Wednesday or will it be? Okay, sounds great. And then for either you or Alyssa, whoever ends up drafting the agenda for August. Assuming there is an agenda for August. Don't know if there are any applications pending currently. We should probably start the August meeting, which I think will have a close to full board, if not everybody here. Just to re-codeify a chair and a vice chair.
Do we have to redo the whole thing or just have it like?
Well, I think technically speaking, I can't just become chair. I have to be voted as chair. And then we would want to choose a vice chair. So technically speaking, yeah, we'll end up doing the whole thing over again. And we should probably start the August meeting by doing that, just because with Jay and Bert missing, it would be good to have as many people in the room as possible.
So just to keep the chain going while we make a motion that we table that to the next meeting where we have a full, where we have a full board membership.
Yep.
And we'll make that decision then. Sound good?
Sounds great.
Somebody second? All in favor? All opposed?
None.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on. What's that now?
Wow, that's a fascinating catch 22. When we, when we approved and officially voted on having a meeting next Wednesday, we didn't have a quorum to actually take a vote because you had recused.
Okay.
So now that you are off of your recusal and we're on administrative. So now that you are off of your recusal and we're on administrative matter, we have four people to vote.
All right. Vote right now.
Yeah, so is
motion to have the meeting next Wednesday at 7:00 PM. Do we have to go?
Uh, yeah, well, specifically to hear the application for zero 25-16.
A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Good. Anything else we missed? Awesome. Motion to adjourn? Somebody say second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, we're out.